All right, we will. Open the Planted Board Meeting for September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner per the general laws. If anybody is recording that is fine. You just need to let us know. Okay, we will be recording it as well. It'll be put online subsequent to the meeting for everyone to access. Seven o'clock P M. Town planners report. John.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Let's see, we've got a number of. Items such as later on this evening that I'll just touch upon briefly here. I didn't with Devon Arnold. We'll be talking later on about a proposed driveway relocation. Presented as a minor plan modification for one thirteen Morgany Road. That's in a state law special permit that we reviewed earlier this year. So we'll be discussing that. Let's see. Ongoing coordination that we have underway for the Greens West. Back in. July, I think it was. The. Process was initiated for. Placing. I should say replacing the covenant, moving on and putting performance bound in their course of limited dollar amount. That. Remains for infrastructure improvement. Randy Brown had provided a thirty thousand dollar estimate for those remaining items. The contractor or should the developer has had a bond. Put into place, but regrettably that was done without any prior coordination with town council. So we go through a number of back and forth efforts. We're still working to tidy that up so that we can do away with the with the covenant and phase out of that. Over at Feeding Hills Road, I mentioned, and that's probably back in July as well. I had a, we'll call it a. Very early conceptual meeting with Mr. Joe Mitchell from EverSource. Regarding a micro grid is what they call it. This would be essentially a. An additional. Solar array to be instructed south of the existing array at their parcel. That's kind of a crossing pattern in this school. So we had a follow-up meeting about a week, a week and a half ago or so. With additional representatives to look at how this might take place. There's an important public. Benefit component to this type of proposal. So as some of you may have seen, there's been. I think discussion at the slide four level acknowledges the deadly meeting. I think it's going to be up till the, I'll follow up with the date. That that discussion will be advancing like a select one other. And lastly, I just mentioned that the comment period came to a close in between our meetings for the Chapter ninety-one. License application through S D P for one forty-one common on. So. You know, from planning's perspective, I did submit a brief. Letter to Christine Hopsover with the Waterways Program and. Just re- provided a copy of the planning board decision for the site and reiterated that. The condition they put into one-on-one point road road acknowledging the relationship of the water activity. To land work activities in specific parking for leased slips could be probably appropriate for them to order conditions similarly. Should they choose to grant that a chapter one license. That buttons it up amongst a lot of other administrative work, but I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Seven oh five, public comment. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda that they want to bring to our attention? If you're on Zoom, you can use the hand raise function. All right. Seeing nothing. Let's see. Seven oh seven. So why don't we just take care of a couple of. That's a minute. Fill in the time. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes that were circulated?
Yep.
Everybody? Yep. Okay. So I'm just gonna run through in order because we have a bunch of them here. And you all have the executive session ones. I haven't seen them, but I'm assuming they were in everybody's packet there.
No, Megan's handing them out.
Okay. So why don't you guys can take a quick look through those as we go through the first couple of sets here. Do I hear a motion to approve the May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Do I hear a second? We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye.
That's good for an aye.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two regular session minutes?
Marcus Phelps, so move. Richard, I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
That's good for an aye.
Do I hear a motion? To approve the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes?
Marcus Phelps, so move. Richard, I'll sing a second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye. Richard, I'll sing a aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye.
That's good for an aye.
Do I hear a motion to approve the July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes?
Marcus Phelps, so move. Richard, I'll sing a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye. Richard, I'll sing a aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye.
That's good for an aye.
Do I hear a motion to approve the August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes?
Marcus Phelps, so move. David Sutton, second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye.
That's good for an aye.
Do I hear a motion to approve the June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two executive session minutes? Does everybody have it? She has to look through it?
No.
Okay. Just give me a yell when you guys have had the opportunity. Actually, you know what? We'll defer on those until after we've gone through the rest of them. All right. Let's. Open up. The continued public hearing, seven ten P M. For the comprehensive impact statement handbook. Under one eighty-five, nine point one. John. Can you just remind us where we left off on this? If you recall.
Sure thing. We left off after considerable discussion. At a time later than Mr. Sutton would have preferred.
Is that in the minutes? I forgot if I saw it or not, but that should be in there.
Just because that's in my other notebook.
The last set of minutes, guys.
All right, that's in there. So, Mr. Doherty, we. Ran through the bulk of the documents. Starting with some of the info we had from town officials. And. The traffic section in fairly great detail. I'll just read one note right here from Chief Anderson suggesting we had a timeframe added to the procedure. Of this. Comprehensive impact statement, the interaction between. An applicant's and the town officials. I can point right there. I don't think we put a. A dot or cross the T on that particular notion that was raised. But I didn't go to any further discussion. Would you like me to share the document or?
Yeah, actually, why don't you do that? Why don't you share the document if you could? All right, this is the most updated one, John.
Yes, this is the one that came in evening up.
Okay. All right, just give me one second here to. Okay, so. The. One of the major things we have to deal with is this traffic issue. And the terminology and things like that. Which I think we have up right now. Yep. And we worked through some of them. One of the. Let's see. Where were the notes? Hold on one second. Let me just find my notes here. So. One of the things that I have not had the opportunity to do because I was going to do last weekend and. Wasn't able to was. Go through that traffic manual and figure out. The best terminology to use. Has anybody had a chance to do that? And have recommendations as to sort of the references and the terminology to use in here from that manual? Nobody?
Could we refer at all to the Mass D O Ts? Transportation Impact Assessment Guidelines? I have a copy of. T I A. Transportation Impact Assessment. From Bellingham, Mass. And they referenced that particular. Document and not. The other one you're talking about. But I would think we could reference both of them if you feel like we should.
Well, and I.
Would be adequate.
Yeah, and I and I. Was not being comprehensive in what I said, because I was referring to that as well. As far as inclusion. I mean, I think we have to, we have to go to. We have to go to any kind of definitive standards that are out there and determine whether we want to incorporate those into this. You know, set. Into this handbook, which. You know, the good thing about the handbook is that it can kind of be changed. On a more fluid basis so that if we, you know, if there becomes an issue. With some standard that's set by the federal government or by Mast D O T or whoever else, you know, we can sort of. Determine whether we want to adopt it or change it or whatever on a pretty fluid basis. So. But, you know, to do that, we have to. Have gone through that. Be comfortable with. What is said in there and incorporate the provision or provisions from those. From those documents. Marcus, have you, do you have specific references? In the, from the guidelines that you would suggest?
No, I'm just saying that incorporate. All of it by reference. I mean, that would be. The guidance that. An applicant would use to prepare a. You know, traffic impact assessment. And and anything else we would include would be above and beyond that, I guess, if we get into specifics. But I would think that would be pretty comprehensive.
All right, anybody else have any thoughts on that? I mean, I, you know. I'll pull them up again. Let me see if I can pull them up, but my memory of those. D O T guidelines is that. There's a bunch of different sections, a bunch, you know, multiple sections of which are not relevant to what we're doing here, I think, right? I mean, isn't some of it about? About. Let's see, I pull it up, like monitoring and. I mean, they have thresholds in there too. I'd imagine, if I remember correctly. That we don't need to reference because those would be arguably in conflict with our thresholds, right? I mean, we have thresholds that define. When this is needed and. That. Conflicts with that. This is simply just meant to be. How you do, how you do a. Impact statement on traffic impacts. So I think there's a portion of it that might be relevant. Let me just, here we go. Yeah, so it's section three, I think, right? The. Analytical procedures. It's got the essential elements of a T I A beginning with definition of the study area limits and providing a summary of the analytical process and requirements. So that's kind of the section I think we need. Did we set, Marcus, did this get sent around? It did, right? Did you send it around?
That John, I guess, did, yeah.
Someone sent it around. Or maybe you sent it to me and John sent it to everybody else. Maybe section mitigation that probably is relevant too.
Mike, can we pull it up on the screen?
Yeah, you can, at least to have the index we can go through, but it looks like three, four, and five might be the relevant sections. I'm not sure. I don't know. I guess we can refer to the whole thing, and if it's just not relevant, it's not relevant, I guess.
Let me just read from this Bellingham, Mass. Executive summary. There's a paragraph that just says. This assessment was prepared in consultation with the Mass D O T and the town of Bellingham. Was performed in accordance with Mass D O Ts Transportation Impact Assessment Guidelines. And was conducted pursuant to the standards of the traffic engineering and transportation planning professions. For the profession, for the preparation of such report. I mean, I think because. Things may change in these handbooks and guidelines. It's just good to have it included as a reference and. And. Maybe not exclude things. I don't know. Because we're not traffic engineers and we just need to make sure that it's performed in in a professional manner. So the information we get. Can be looked at by E P W and whoever else has any. Knowledge if we get a third-party consultant involved. In reviewing the information. You know, we'd have, we'd have it done in a professional way.
All right. Well. John, do you have that there?
I do. The document Marcus has quoted or the guidelines?
No, not the Bellingham thing, the T I A guidelines. You want to go to page. Thirty-two. And thank you for. Making it bigger. So. This. I think is is kind of what we're. Talking about. Is that right, Marcus? This. Section.
I mean, if that accomplishes, if that gets us. The information we want, then. We could just include this by reference. Section five. Of. You know, the document. And make sure there isn't anything, look at this and see if there's anything that. Would be an issue or a problem for Southwick specifically.
All right.
I mean, this will probably yield a. Two hundred and fifty-page report, I would expect.
Well, is that not, is that really what we're looking for at that point? On every project?
Well, they'll give us an executive summary, so.
All right, here's what I would say. This is for homework here. I don't, everybody on the board, just take a look. With what we have right now listed in the guidelines, right? We have. Section one and section two. They're counting multi-part sections. Of what we're looking for as we've spelled it out now. And then take a look through. I would say at a minimum, that section right here, that starts on page thirty-two. I think, I forget what section it is, section. Four or five? Five? And. Just go through it and just see whether if we just referred to this. Set of guidelines here that covers everything that we are looking for or whether it's too much. And. You know, it's obviously easier just to say comply with this, right? I mean, that's, you know, then you don't have to worry about. Spelling things out in detail and presumably it provides a level of comfort for people doing traffic studies because they. This is, I'm presuming how they do it most of the time. At least in Massachusetts. So. I would say. If everybody can go through it, we can kind of circle back on it next week and see whether. You know, I guess, A, leave it as it is, B, just refer to. At least section five there, if not more sections. And then C is other, right? If there's some other mix of the two or or some other. Requests certainly bring it out there, but I think that's. Where I'd like to get. That section. Was there anything else that we needed to discuss tonight on this set of guidelines? Nothing. All right, I'm gonna then open it up. To any town officials who have any comments or questions. And then I'm gonna, not seeing any, I'm gonna open it up to public comments or questions about. These guidelines.
Yes, sir.
We have one question there.
I thought, I think I saw Diane's hand start to go up. Diane?
Yes, Diane, yeah, five-point road road. I'm still strongly encouraging the financial information for the community meeting.
Yep, and and I, and I don't mean to dismiss that for tonight. I'm just, we have a pretty lengthy. Decision to go through tonight and and since we're gonna have to deal with. The traffic thing at the next one, which hopefully would be a quick conversation. We can deal with the financial component to it. You know, I mean, I still. I still think. There's not going to be much. Positive reception of it. I I do think it's worth, if you have. An alternative or a sort of. You know, some other language that you may suggest that's a little less than what you have right there. You may want to submit it for consideration because I'm not sure. It didn't sound like at the last meeting that. This language was going anywhere, but. But, you know, before we wrap it up, I'll certainly have one last discussion about it. I think that that's worthwhile. But, you know, I would, you know, put it on you too, just if you have. If you have a sort of a middle ground and you. Are willing to offer that, that would certainly be helpful.
For next meeting?
For the next meeting, which is on October fourth, we'll probably take it up again, and we're probably gonna. You know, get pretty close to finishing these up in in October, I would have mentioned, if not that meeting, then the next one. Thanks, Diane. Any other public questions or comments? So I will. Why don't we continue this on to October fourth? Meg, is there anything on October fourth?
Anything on the agenda for our public?
No, there is not.
All right. So do I hear a motion to continue this to seven ten P M. On October fourth?
Marcus Phelps, so move. Richard, I'll sing a second.
We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye. Richard, I'll sing a aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
All right, so that's all set. Look at this on the dot, seven thirty P M. Public hearing.
Smoking it. Covid, man. Need to have it more often.
I know, it really, that's, you can see the impacts right now clearly. Public hearing, a state law special permit and site plan approval application for land off Hillside Road and Meadow Lane. I'm gonna ask. John or Meg or. You should feel free to designate one of the board members to read the notice since I don't have it right here. But someone's got to read the notice.
I got a Boston accent. They never figure it out.
That's right, the rule and drag is that. All right, most public hearing. Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, seven thirty P M. Regarding a state law special permit and site plan approval for land off Hillside Road and Meadow Lane. This was rescheduled due to the state primary election for chapter forty-eight, section eleven. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, section eleven, that. The planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven thirty P M. Via Zoom. And in the venue here, in my four fifty-four College Highway, Southwick, Massachusetts. On an application by Oler Kuya. For an estate law special permit and site plan approval at property off Hillside Road and Meadow Lane, zone R forty. The property is shown on current assets with map thirty-eight, parcel eleven. The information provided, the African potent permits on a state lot. At the subject property for a single-family home in accordance with the code of Southwick zoning by all, chapter twenty-five, sections nine, ten, twelve, and twenty-one. Copy of the application and plans may be inspected by contact from the town planner, John Goddard, at his email address. Any person who's interested or wishing to be heard. Any person who's interested or wishing to be heard on the application, sit here at the time, and it might go to a charter person south of planning board.
Okay. So, do we have, who do we have here for the applicants?
I am here on behalf of the applicant. My name is Alexandra Chiketti from Arlevak Associates, and the applicant is Mr. Oleg Kuliak.
Okay. Is the applicant present as well, or is it just you, Alexandra?
I believe he was going to be joining the Zoom, so I see the four-one-three, Rio, Rio, that could potentially be him. Oleg, is that you?
That's me, correct. All right, perfect. All right, so I will let Alexandra, I assume you're making the least presentation from a formal standpoint.
That's correct.
If you want to begin, that would be great.
Absolutely. With your permission, I'd like to share our most recent and up-to-date plan on the screen. So the applicant proposes to create an estate lot and construct of a single-family home with associated site improvements. Associated site improvements will include, but are not limited to, a driveway with access from Meadow Lane. Site grading, a new septic system, and utility connections with existing utilities located within Meadow Lane, as shown here on the filing plan. The property is located within the R forty residence district, and at this time. The special permit is being required and requested under section one-eighty-four or one-eighty-five, my apologies, dash twenty-one. The property currently consists of undeveloped forested land and generally slopes from the northern boundary at Meadow Lane to the south towards wetland resource areas. No work is proposed within a jurisdictional vicinity to those wetland resource areas. And at this time, I'd like to open up some questions that the planning boards may potentially have, and potentially the public as well.
All right, was there, since the applicant's on as well, I'll let, if the applicant has anything they want to say, they can certainly jump in here as well. Okay, here nothing, I will. Turn it over to the board, any questions or comments from the board member?
Marcus Phelps. Where is the frontage for lot being satisfied? Do you need a frontage on an accepted public way?
Absolutely. The frontage is gonna be along Meadow Lane, and I don't believe that dimension is shown on the plan, but I do have it written down here. Sixty feet of frontage on the, and an access width of two-hundred feet along Meadow Lane.
Alexandra, could you zoom in on that area for us, please?
The anti-tracking pad, you can see where that's located, that's the entrance and the driveway, ingress and ingress. And the location off of Meadow Lane, it's a little bit confusing to see based upon that anti-tracking pad, but that was added. To the revised filing plan this afternoon, based on some comments from the DPW director, Randy Brown.
So the cul-de-sac boundary. Touches the property line for this piece of land, is that correct?
Proposed to, yes.
Don't need any easement into Sunnyside. To get to the Meadow Lane.
Not as of right now, no, unless the planning board deems that necessary.
Okay, any other board members have any questions or comments? All right, let me. Read in. Just give me a minute, let me just minimize here. Three comments, right, John, is that right?
Three comment letters. I do have a response letter that Alexandra submitted this afternoon. It might be easiest. For us to go through that so we can think about. The consultant's response to each one, if you'd like.
Yeah, no, you know what, that's perfect, so why don't we just do that, and. I will. Hold on one second. Big comments. So, John, what are these? First comments, so these.
I can also speak that I did just share my screen, this is our response letter that we did submit to John and Megan this afternoon. I don't mind running through these with the planning board, if that's what you guys choose to do, so that way we can get all the comments heard. They're from John Goddard and from Randy Brown, the building inspector, I believe, and the fire department were the other two town department comments that we received. And they deemed that they didn't see any issues moving forward with the project.
Okay, so Alexandra, you want to just scroll down to the second page, just so I can see, I haven't seen the letter yet. So you have Randy's. Okay, all right, perfect. So, yeah, why don't you go back up to page one, and we'll just run through it, and I'll read them in because. We do have to have a record of it, but. All right, so the first comments are from. You know, I don't, John, was this in your role as Stormwater or in your role as town planner?
Town planner.
Okay. Comments from John Goddard, town planner, one, crenulated line shown surrounding the. Driveway and home site development areas is understood to be diagrammatic of the limit. Hold on a second, I just can't see this very well, of clearing. The subject property is currently being harvested for timber. And this line should be revised where relevant to more precisely indicate the clearing limits as related to any vegetation to be retained for buffering purposes. So, Arlevak is asking for that to be a condition. I mean, Alexandra, do you have a sense of. Where that would be on the, on the. Plan?
We don't expect it to be much further or much more than what we're showing now. But to be quite accurate and precise, we don't have the exact. Location of that, of the tree line, so what we would have to do is send our field crew back out there, which we were unable to do today. But we can do that prior to construction, and we were kind of hoping to get that as a condition in the plan, should the planning board approve the project tonight.
Okay. All right, perfect. So number two, under one-eighty-five, twenty-one, B twelve G, the applicant must construct a hardened stabilized access drive, although the application there acknowledges this requirement, the submittal. Of a construction detail to the Department of Public Works Director for approval prior to construction will likely be considered as a condition. In any forthcoming decision of the planning board. It sounds like you guys added that. To the site plan. As well, was that not on there before?
We, I believe that was one that was on there. Narrative, no, that's okay. I believe it was mentioned mostly in the narrative, but we understand that it'll be part of any decision, should the planning board approve the project.
Okay, and I misunderstood, I thought you had said before that it was added and wasn't on there before. All right.
You're right, right here, the anti-tracking pad, yes, that's, and there's also a second one that was installed, the install inlet protection during construction. These two points of contact were.
Oh, that was, okay, got it, all right, thank you. And then third, from Mr. Goddard, the required statement under one-eighty-five, twenty-one, B fourteen needs to be included on the filing plan. And that is. Where, what, where is it on the plan, just so we?
Lot A is an estate lot, building there on is permitted only in accordance with the special permit estate lot provisions of zoning bylaws of the town of Southwick. That's the exact statement required under.
That's my shameful moment there, Mike.
It's allowed, it's allowed. All right, so now we'll move on to the comments from DPW, Randy Brown. One, the applicant shall install and maintain a fifty-foot-long anti-tracking pad during construction to prevent dirt and debris from being carried into the road. Understood, that's reflected, as we talked about, on the site plan. Two, the applicant shall install and maintain a driveway apron to prevent runoff from the road entering into the property. That is being installed and maintained on there, and it's being, is included in the updated filing plan. Three, the applicant shall take all precautions to protect the catch basin and manhole near the driveway entrance. The applicant will be responsible to repair any damage done to these structures. Understood. And. We will, that'll probably be a condition put into, to any decision on here, that that needs to be. Maintained and protected. Four, the applicant shall obtain a driveway permit from the Public Works Department. Again, that's more of a future, just a reminder from Randy, and then five, excuse me. The area of disturbance appears to be just under one acre, the applicant shall. Be aware that any additional land disturbance beyond the limits shown on the plan could trip the requirements for a stormwater permit. Again, just a reminder. From Randy, all right. Building Department, Kyle Scott had nothing to offer, sees no problem with their proceeding, and the Southwood Fire Department sees no issues with the plan as shown. All right, so that addresses all the town comments. Having heard those, I will go back to the board and see if they have any other questions or comments before I turn it over to town officials and public, anybody on the board? Okay, we will go to, any town officials have any questions or comments? I see in here none, so I'm going to. Open it up for public comments. Why don't we start with the people in the room, and then we'll take Zoom, and if you're on Zoom and you can just use the hand raise function, that would be great. Marcus, if you want to just. If there's people in the room who are raising their hand and want to speak, just point them out, call them out, and we'll take them in turn.
Anybody in the room that wants to speak, a gentleman in the back, could you come forward and stand here, please give your name and address, so. We can. Hear you, good.
Hi, good evening, I'm Kirk, seventeen Meadow Lane. My purpose for being here this evening is, I'm a little bit concerned with the actual use of the property. Is this just for a single-family residence, or is there some other use that's? That occurs to property, and the reason I ask is, and I don't know this for a fact, but. From my understanding, there's possibly gonna be a small farm put in it, and you can just see by the way it's being clear-cut right now, it's not really. It's, they're just mowing it down, it's not the normal clearing you'll see for like a house. And there's also livestock on the property now that's set way back, that's in a pen, so. Not sure if the planning board is aware, but myself, and I know I can speak for some of the neighbors that I've. Had conversations with, that. We do have restricted covenants in our neighborhood that restricts. Farm hands, so we're, we're all, we've all been here for. Eight-five-plus years, we've invested in a. A subdivision community that we're, you know, trying to protect our investments with. And have certain restrictions on houses that. Are in our neighborhood, so I just, I do have a copy of this. But can, can somebody tell us if there is a, what the intended use for the property is?
So the question is, what is the intended use for the property beyond just a single-family home? Will it involve any kind of. Livestock, horses, whatever on there? Appleton? Consultant, whoever?
So the property is strictly going to be a single-family residence. And there is livestock currently on the property, but nothing that falls out of the guidance of the R forty zoning. So, and it's personal animals, it's nothing, there's no business being run out of. Anything, it's not gonna be a business, it's just a single-family house that's gonna be for my family. And this particular lot does not fall into the covenant restrictions of the Meadow Lane subdivision. This is outside the guidelines. The frontage is on Meadow Lane, but based on the recorded plans for that subdivision. This doesn't fall in the jurisdiction of the previous covenants that they have.
The person speaking, could you state your name and your address, please?
Oleg Kuliak, seventy-run, Southwick.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, I just, we would just like to formally, or I would just like to formally. State that we are concerned that, you know, this will affect our property values, we've invested in this community. And even though he's saying that it doesn't fall into that category, I don't know that for a fact, but. Boy would at least consider helping to protect our investments in that, in this community. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from people here in the audience? Hand raised, please come forward. Name and address.
London is in over nineteen Meadow Lane. I have a couple of problems, actually. First of all, why is this not? Why is this particular lot not considered part of our covenants? Number one, why wouldn't it be? It's an estate lot on Meadow Lane, but not considered part of our covenants. One, that's my first question. It is number two in our covenants, it says no harm animals, none of us can have chickens, anything else, why would this lot be allowed to have cows? Which are already on the property, you can see them from the road, okay, which isn't whatever far away thing, so that's number one. Okay, number two is, this lot is being completely clear-cut, and what I don't understand is why conservation has not been. Involved in this, in this area. Number one, we have turtle brook, which is right back there, which has always been a huge. Thing for conservation, I mean, Fred Filios couldn't even put his garden too close to the budding line because of. Turtles that they said that were a protected species that couldn't even, he couldn't even put his garden close to that, the buffer line. Because of this protected species, yet we have a, a new person coming in there and totally clear-cutting without conservation, even being, even going to the site. So I, number two, don't understand that at all. So I mean, that, that, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, the season exists needs to happen until we can find out what's happening with this lot, with this property. And, you know, all of us who live on Meadow Lane, we, you know, we have, we have to have certain things, we have to have certain mailboxes, we have to have. Certain, you know, everything, and that's what we do, and that's the, that's the, you know, the environment we've set up, but now one person wants to come in and totally change our environment. Is that fair, number one, and number two, not the laws that, you know, that we, that we moved into, you know, the covenants that we all follow. But number one, I mean, conservation, where are they? That's number one, and they have been, they have been, you know, they have been aware. They thought it was someone else doing their, that, and they didn't realize it was this man. Be something there, that needs to go, I mean, I remember when Fred tried to put a bar, remember Fred? They had a big fit, conservation came knocking on his door, oh no, it's a turtle, and here we have rough cutting, I mean, this guy had hundreds of logs, huge logs, pileup. I mean, he has cameras, obviously he's concerned about who's looking there, Roseanne's boyfriend went to walk down there with the dog, and he was taking care of, just to walk, like we all have done for years. And the police show up because he has cameras everywhere. I mean, this doesn't sound like, you know, that kind of deal, so I urge you to please look into this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the live audience, Marcus?
Yes, there's one more person coming forward.
Okay.
Want shade, cold roll, butter to the property, I'm right here, a couple of questions. Some of our neighbors said, is this going to be farm zone or any type of farm zone in the future? And it's a thirty-five-acre lot, wondering, this is right in back, what's here, is this the only spot? He can build. The size of the lot, I'm just wondering why it's so right here, that's the only spot. Like he can build um the size of the lot, I'm just wondering why it's so right here, if that's the only spot. Or there's other options here, instead of being right back.
One more hand raised in the audience.
I have a super quick question, um.
Okay. Please name an address.
Pat, I live in Oahu and nineteen Meadow Lane, my question is that like for the street number, like the house number, it's gonna be a part of Meadow Lane, correct?
I don't know if that's been answered. Presumably.
Like it would be. The whatever number it is after the last house in the middle lane at the end for an address, correct? So why would it not fall underneath the Meadow Lane guideline?
So let me, let me just jump in because it's been raised a couple of times and I I can tell you at least my understanding, um. It is a couple of things, um. One is if it's not part of the original subdivision and it doesn't have. Covenants and restrictions running with the deed, it's not going to be subject to the covenants and restrictions. Um, but secondly, and probably more importantly, um covenants. Um. Are only good for thirty years, um unless they are specifically allowed to be. Extended and are extended. And I believe, and I could be wrong, but tell me if I if I'm right, I believe these conditions, covenants that are that are applicable to the Meadow Lane properties. Are over thirty years old.
They say it's incorrect, Michael.
So the Meadow Lane is not, those covenants were not on file more than thirty years ago?
Nineteen ninety-five.
It's two more years, we have, we have until twenty-four, I believe.
Well, it's not, it's not when y'all, not when you move in, it's when those things were filed with the registry, um. So just make sure that's right, but I mean, I'm not, I'm not doubting. Um, I think those are, those properties are from the nineties if if memory serves me, right, um. Um, but just makes, you know, I don't know, eh they got to be coming close to when those. Those covenants are running. Um, and they may not even be able to be extended depending on the language that's used in them, so. Um, uh, you know, I I don't, I see the issue, I just not sure that that. The 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 sort of legal enforcement of covenants is. Is gonna be allowed um on this property. Um, I do think it should be something that is taken into account by the board and frankly by the property. Owner, the applicant, um in in trying to. In in purchasing the property and determining how they're gonna use it, um, you know, you should. Take into consideration the neighborhood and the neighbors that you have there and how that is being used and and to. Extent that they've, everybody's been living by the same covenants and restrictions. You know, uh, I I think that that's the appropriate way to do it, but. Whether it legally applies, I don't think that's the case. Um. Alright, uh, why don't we just keep going on the public? Questions and comments, um.
We've already had two other people that that didn't move in at the same time, brand new, like not even a year have, or a year and a half. Have moved into our our area with brand new lots that they just bought and built, okay, and they follow the covenants, why, why doesn't he have?
Alright, so what I'm telling you is is. It's not when the property is purchased. If the property was one of the lots in the original subdivision site plan. Um, they would have been subject to covenants and restrictions. That in those covenants and restrictions, if you go to, you can do it online, it's masslandrecords.com. You can search out. A copy of those covenants that were filed with the Camden County Registry of Deeds and you can see the date those were filed. Um, under the law, those covenants are only good for thirty years, so I I can't tell you when they were filed. Usually covenants get filed before they're gonna uh transfer any property. Sorry about that.
Just quickly, um, we we do know that they were filed.
Um, alright, sorry, um, so. He wanted to find them, but I I suspect that they are.
They were filed in nineteen ninety-five.
We're asking the planning board to respect the spirit of the covenants and the fact that. There's a a good number of taxpayers in this town that have invested in this community to be able to maintain. The restriction so that, you know, we don't have, we have nothing against farms, I mean, we all need farms, but it's. This is a subdivision and not, you know, and and it's gonna, it's gonna directly impact our property values, so we just. Would like you to consider that, please.
Yep, no, and I absolutely agree with that, I mean, I think that's what I was trying to say is I think that the spirit of it, you know, as a neighborhood, y'all are are be. Even if they aren't applicable, you guys are governing yourselves under the spirit of those covenants or the text of those covenants and so. To have a property come in and sort of ignore that, uh, you know, I think should be taken into account by the planning board. Um, anybody else live who has a question or comment?
One more hand went up. Coming forward.
I can test them or through doing people in the audience.
Well, name, name and address. Your name.
I'm from Meadow Lane, my, my name, Fred Filio. Okay.
Okay.
Um, you might just want to come closer though because the people online can't hear you, the speakers here in the morning.
Uh, I'll sit down. I, uh. Get down a farm. I like farms. And I don't have a problem with a couple of them. But, and I've talked to Ole. Um, several times. And my idea is that it's best for neighbors to work things out themselves. However. Ole told me that he's not going to clear cut. And he is clear cut. Okay. And, you know, he told me that he's did, he's just telling you. You know, we're gonna read big some and that kind of thing and he's just. So there's a little bit of uh credibility issue. With what he says and what he's doing. And pardon me. That's telling me I need to get ready for them. Which might all would do that. So, um, and I think the planning board, uh forestry people, um conservation people. And even the fire department. Um, need to. Question. His credibility on this because I have found it to be somewhat slippy. And when it's slippy one way, it's usually slipping another way. I'm sorry, Ole, I actually like you quite a bit, but. I have to look at the the information I get, I'm a businessman. And I have to look at the information I get. And not the emotional side. Now, um, he, I think it was said that there was eight acre of disturbed ground. Uh, limit of an acre. Way, way past that. And ladies, way, way past it, and if you guys haven't gone. Taken a look yourself, and I'm telling you right now, you're not doing your job. Because what is being said by the attorney. By Ole is far, far different than the reality. Okay? And this is a serious thing, because you don't know. You could approve this thing and he could have a. You know, once it's approved, he can do anything he wants, maybe. I don't know, I mean, I can't. I can't say, it's hard to say just how far off. The actual plan he's gonna go, he's already gone off of it. So we know that. And, but. How far off? I don't know, he's trying to go, that's something I don't know, but um, I don't know, you want to have a. A water park there or something, who knows, I mean, you know, and about the covenant. Um. I I can true points on uh that it's not part of the original plan, right? But Meadow Lane itself is part of the original. And I, and I noticed that he is. Going to be driving his car out on Meadow Lane. Right, and he can't get to his property any other way. Yet he can ignore the covenants of everyone on Meadow Lane. I think you have to consider that as well, if he were using, if he had a. You know. Derek Drive or something like that, well, maybe we will have an argument. You know? But he's using Meadow Lane. And I think that is the fact. That needs to be considered. Okay, it's not an opinion. And we know, all know that the law works on fact. Not a thing, well, is it really part of the covenants or is it really my opinion? My opinion, but the fact is, he's using Meadow Lane. Where everyone on it has cut. Okay? Um. Other than all of that. I I personally would like him to, I think he's a nice fellow, I met his wife, she's a lovely lady and they have some great kids, from what I can tell. You know, I mean, I don't know them that well, but um, uh, and it was nice to have somebody at the end there. You know, because, you know, teenagers come there, they're going to the forest, they have. I mean, there was ch- chairs, there was little campgrounds and chairs that were so permanently there, you know, in the different parts of of that. Uh, that section, yeah, and uh, you know, kids were going and browsing and doing what teenagers do. Um, I don't need to get into this, because we men there's not a special group. And, you know, there's, I mean, the place was kind of a mess back there, you know, and and right at the end, you know, when. Kids would come and park there, you know, stuff like that, but I kind of like that there's somebody there, I just wish he would stick to his plan here. Right, and not clear cut the place, I understand why he does it. He wants the money, he invested in this thing, he probably overextended himself. Believe me, I don't know that, but it's possibility and he's cutting all his time away to get the money from. And pay for the. You know, the thing, or there may be other scary motives, I don't know, but I don't think he's being straight with us. And I don't think he's being straight with you. And you, if you want to be responsible for your position, you need to get out there and you need to talk to people. There's two gentlemen back there that are doing the cutting, huh? Oh, it's not you, you look like we're not, never mind. I, I, there's a fellow. Uh, who lived, uh. Maybe, maybe, I think he's, that's obvious, yeah, yeah. Uh, now, I heard a rumor. That.
Sir, could you address the board and that folks in the audience?
Well, I heard a rumor. That um he was told. By the people who are doing the cutting. That Ole told them to clear cut it.
No, you can't.
Let's, yeah, let's keep it to what we're actually.
Okay, so.
Questions and comments that we actually know the answer, they.
Oh, this is not part, okay, sorry, that is not part of the plan, that is clearly not part of the plan, any plan. Either forestry plan or this plan. Okay, which says one acre of disturbed. Maybe multiply that a few times. Okay?
All right, let me, I mean, I asked you, do you have a copy of the forestry plan for that property?
I know.
Somebody else might fill me up with it.
Okay.
Just happen to have it.
So, I mean, let's, let's take a. Break here with the public comments, because I, you know, obviously there's issues that need to be addressed and I will sort of. Allow if if he chooses and if he doesn't choose, that's fine too, um, that's his his choice. Uh, the applicant to sort of address those things if if he wishes to.
I would like to address uh about a dozen of those questions.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So, uh, first of all, the issue with people uh completely ignoring the no trespassing signs everywhere. And walking their animals and. Um, having issues with people messing with things on the site is the issue, there is cameras there. And I have caught multiple people trespassing multiple times on the property. This has been a a common problem there, everybody's gotten used to just walking on that land. But unfortunately, that's not the case anymore. And the other weekend when the police were called is because a gentleman ran away from me into the woods, left his car parked at the entrance. The police came out, we we found out that it was one of the neighbors who had. Completely ignored the no trespassing signs and was was touching things that he wasn't supposed to be touching, so. The fact that people are going to walk their dog on the land when they're not supposed to is is a problem because. There's two no trespassing signs right at the entrance at Meadow Lane. So it just doesn't seem like anybody cares, now second. In regards to the logging of the property, there is an approved logging plan. The state has been out there at least a half a dozen times before the plan was approved. I've had conservation out there to look over the plan. And to make sure that we weren't crossing any boundaries, that we were not touching anything we're not supposed to. Now, the way they are cutting is the way the cutting plan was submitted to the state. The logger that's doing the job is following the guidelines that he's allowed to do. The trees are excessively tall, some are seventy, eighty feet high. When the canopy has trees removed from it, it becomes an issue with safety and certain trees have to come down regardless. Now, this is not going to be a farm. This is going to be a house for my wife and my children, we do have some farm animals. And the reason I purchased this property is because it falls in the R forty zoning and there were no guidelines or restrictions or covenant restrictions with the lot. And I do intend on keeping everything not visible from the street, so at this point. The lot is being cleared and not clear cut, it's just being logged per the guidelines of the state. That were submitted and approved by the state, all notices went to conservation, they were well aware of what was happening there. So the plan itself was approved and they are following the guidelines. In regards to the disturbance, we are not disturbing more than an acre of land. Has more than an acre of land been cut, that is true, it has been more than an acre. But they are following the guidelines, the stumps are all still there. The area where the house theoretically will be going has not been cleared, the most of the trees. That were removed were the timber trees and the smaller trees are all still there. Not, nothing has been run for the driveway, we haven't done any of this uh of the items that are located on this plan.
So let me just ask you one question from that all came to mind, which is, you know. I if you. Hmm, when you have to go out there and remove all those stumps. Plus. Build the driveway and the house, um, you you're telling me that you're not gonna. Disturb more than an acre of of land?
That is correct, we are staying under the one acre guideline to include the driveway and the site for where the home is going.
Okay. Alright, um, I'm sorry to interrupt you, if you want to continue, if you had more to say, please feel free to do so.
Uh, in regards to the location of the house, um, there are certain restrictions on running underground utilities. Uh, along with the cost of the farther you go off the road, the farther, the the larger expense it will be to run utilities, driveway. And other requirements, so the location of the. House where it is now, it's um, it's like a flatter area. Where it is still financially feasible to run utilities in a driveway. So that that is why it's located where it's located. And I would have liked to put it farther in and farther back, but we have to maintain the buffers. And between the location of the septic and future potential location of a well, there are distances that we have to maintain.
Alright, so let me ask you, if the map is up, um. So let me ask you this first, I guess, which is. Um. What is your, what kind of animals do you have on there now or or what do you plan on having on there?
So currently I have uh two cows on there. They're my personal cows, my children are raising them with me, they're their animals, uh, I also have several goats. And chickens. And that is all allowed under the R forty zoning, and they've all had their yearly inspection where I currently live and we've never had any issues with it.
And. On this map for the proposed plate lot, where do you propose to have? Uh, the pens and chicken coops and what have you for those animals?
If you're looking at the map. If you're looking at the map, where you see the words Lot A just above that. Right there.
Okay, so that's being clear cut as well around th- that area too?
It's not being clear cut.
Yeah, no, that's, that's not the term I meant to use. I'm sorry. It's being cut, um, uh, beyond, beyond the, um, the, uh, enclosure that is shown on the site plan, right, for that, for the footprint of the house plus the land around it.
Well, the way they're, the way they're logging that, I mean, interrupt you, but the way they're logging it, the trees that are staying will just be penned in. I, I don't plan on removing the rest of the trees. So wherever they're located, there still will be trees there along with them.
Yeah, but you are at a minimum, just so that I can understand it and people can understand it when they're looking at this map, right? We have, um, and I just wanna make sure um, we have what's indicated on here. It could be a proposed naturally or a planted vegetated buffer, which is the sort of squiggly line that goes all the way around the, um, driveway and the house, right? Um, and so, but it sounds like at a minimum, you're also gonna be cutting a path that goes down to where it says Lot A.
A, a path doesn't need to be cut because the way they're logging it, you can just walk naturally. It doesn't necessarily need to have a path. It'll just be land that you can walk on between the trees.
Okay. Well, let me ask, I guess, let me ask you this. Is is there cutting going on outside of this proposed naturally or planted vegetated buffer?
Yes, there is. There is a, a cutting plan that was submitted to the state that was approved and they're cutting logs, uh, for that plant. I can send you a copy of that plan.
All right, and and so I'm sure there'll be, um, uh, uh, um, smaller diameter tree and brush and whatever else left potentially there um, that remains after the cutting. Um, but y- you are at least cutting down by where it says Lot A and that's where you intend to keep the animals.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Um, is anything being kept up by the house?
There's the fifty foot buffer that is staying between, um, the surrounding houses. Um, it, we're not touching it. Um, a couple of the big trees were pulled out of it, but.
No, I'm just talking about the farm, the farm animals, sir. I just, is there any animals being kept up by the house up there?
No.
Okay, they're all being kept up down by Lot A.
Correct.
All right, because I mean, I, you know, and I, to be fair, I, I, to me, uh, in just doing a rough and maybe Alexander can quickly measure it, but I mean, you're talking, it looks like I don't know, four hundred, five hundred feet from any any property border, um. I, I think. Um. Would be, it would be a rough estimate, I think, um, where those animals are gonna be. I mean, to me, that's at least I, I think something that should be considered by some of the neighbors as to whether that really is gonna be an issue for them. Um.
I mean, I, I grew up in Southwick and I understand where they're coming from. And the idea that everybody's thinking that it's gonna be a farm there, it's incorrect. I have a couple of animals for my kids that, you know, they, they do the four H and things like that. Um, there is no residential lots behind me currently. It's all vacant land. So it's the perfect spot to keep, you know, anything away. Um, you know, Southwick has the right to farm act, so um, I don't understand why that would be trumped at this point.
Well, I mean, here's, you know, I'll tell you exactly how I think of it and, and I'm not speaking for the board as a whole. I'm always speaking for myself and I'll turn it over to other public comments or if you have other things to address, but I, you know, you are, what I see is you trying to have sort of the best of both worlds where you have the ability to, to have, you know, farm animals, um, you know, I don't, you know, we won't call it a farm, but at least you have a variety of farm animals on your property, um, as well as living in a subdivision, right? I mean, you're trying to get the sort of best of both worlds in that situation. And a, a, a lot of these subdivisions, um, and this obviously included have covenants to, to restrict the ability to have farm animals because they're trying to have this community in the subdivision where there are no, uh, farm animals. Again, I, I understand what applies to your lot. Um, it may be different than what applies to those, but I think the idea that if you, you're trying to have the best of both worlds and in doing so, you gotta make sure I, you know, I think for your benefit going forward, but respect your neighbors and try to do it in the right way. Um, and, and don't sort of, you know, allow any of the impacts of what they're trying to prevent, um, impact them, right? And so, you know, I don't, maybe this, the distance away that that is, that may not be an impact. I'd be curious to hear whether any of these neighbors see that as a, as a proper solution, but, um, you know, that's what I see it as. I see it as, you know, it's, y- you're gonna have neighbor issues if you, if you make this to be um, sort of open farm animals near where other people are living. I mean, I just think they're gonna have an issue with it. So whether we can do something about it or not is up for debate, but um, it's certainly gonna be a neighbor issue. Um, Oleg, unless there was something, unless there was more that you had to address right now, I was just gonna open it up to other public comments and I'll certainly give you a chance later on if you want to address anything else.
Yeah, that's it at this point.
Okay.
Um.
If we, uh, take any online questions before we go back to, uh, people in the audience who have already spoken?
Yep, and I see Kevin has a hand raised, so I'll go to him first. Kevin, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Kevin Meter, Ten Derry Lane. Couple of questions about the animals. First of all, you mentioned, the, the mention of two cows, which I've heard are already on the property and now chickens. Um, what's the guarantee that this is not gonna expand over time? Is, is there any way we can prevent that? And secondly, if there's, I assume there's gonna be some sort of building for these animals to live in. Um, right now it seems like there's cows just spending twenty-four seven out in the open air in our neighborhood. But if there's gonna be buildings for these animals to be kept in, where, why are they not on the plan so that we can have a full picture of what's really going on here?
Um, well, I guess, uh, why don't I turn that to the applicant and just, are you planning on having outbuildings to, to house the animals? I presume at least for the, the chickens, you're having a coop, but.
So, so currently the, the, the cows do have a three-sided shelter, so they're not just out in the open. So they do, they do have shelter where they're at. And, uh, we've already met with the, uh, animal control officer. She doesn't have any problems with the current setup. It's just a temporary setup. And once the house is built and maybe prior to that, depending on, um, how things go, I would like to put a three-stall barn in the vicinity of where it says Lot A. Has that been determined yet? No. Um, it's just that at this point, we're trying to get the house in and then, uh, you know, we'll apply for a permit to install a barn. And it's not gonna be a large structure. It'll just be a, a, a three-stall barn.
Yeah, you know, I will say just to, to put the, the, I guess, uh, bylaw side of it to answer Kevin's question, which is there are some limitations even in this zone. I mean, that, you know, you do have the right to farm and this is what Southwick is and there is the ability to do this. Um, but in this residential zone, I believe there is a limitation on, um, it must be for personal use, right? And so obviously at some point, um, you know, I think it becomes not for personal use, right? I mean, I think that you can't justify some number um, as personal use at some point. So, I mean, I think there are some limitations. What those are probably a bit of a gray area, but there are limitations. All right, I see Anthony and I apologize, I can't, Frasco, go ahead.
Sure. Uh, thank you very much. Anthony Frasco, Eight Meadow Lane. Um, you know, we've got a great neighborhood up here. You've heard concerns, people in the audience and people on Zoom. There's definitely some concerns. I think, I think concern one is the covenants. Whether they apply, um, it is on Meadow Lane and, uh, I've been here a long time. Uh, I believe nineteen ninety-five is the correct date and I believe those covenants are still in effect. I think, um, you know, we hope Oleg is gonna be a good neighbor. We really do, but I think I'd love to see something in writing on the intentions because I think these intentions can get out of control fast and this becomes a a bigger issue. I think you all know, um, and I say that to our elected officials that are on the call. We have a decaying road here, um, and any additional use on this road is gonna become dangerous, especially if it's more than residential. Um, we are literally fighting time on this road right now. Um, I think Linda brought, I think it was Linda brought up, you know, there's, uh, wetland clearing. Um, I think those concerns are real. Hopefully they've been addressed. I know Oleg answered the question. Hopefully, you know, people are being respectful and the town is aware of the clearing and as it, uh, pertains to the wetlands, I know someone's on on the horn today from, uh, Levec Associates and we certainly hope that that's being done, uh, the correct way. But, um, you know, this is just seems like a situation that if it's not handled correctly now and things aren't put in writing, it could get out of control in the future and I think that would be our concerns. We wanna protect our great neighborhood. I think Kurt said that well. Um, and we wanna be, we've been here for a long time. We've raised families here. Um, we hope Oleg can do the same. We, we don't wish him any ill intentions. We just wanna make sure he does live here under the same conditions that we all live here. Thank you.
All right, um, is there anybody else on Zoom? I don't see another hand raised, but is there anybody else who had issue with doing the hand raise function and has a comment? Speak up if you do.
We have one person live here in the audience that wants to make another comment.
Go for it, Marcus.
Linda Mithnello, um, Nineteen Meadow Lane. One thing I know for absolute certainty, my husband, Ramet, is on the conservation committee for twenty-one years. And he, um, when they first started cutting, he went down to Tor and Bar Street and he introduced himself and he is the only person from conservation that has been there. We thought that the abutting neighbor was the one cutting down the trees, not Oleg. And we found out last night that it was Oleg from our neighbor and he called Dennis Clark this morning and dated the guy, I don't know his last name, pardon, today. So that has been happened today. Conservation wasn't unaware of any of this until today. So that is an erroneous statement that he made. The conservation knows anything about it because they do not. So that I know for a fact, my husband did not come tonight.
Well, but that, no, but ma'am, I mean, that's, that's wrong. I mean, first of all, Dennis Clark is not the conservation coordinator anymore, so that's, um, we're, that's
Whatever the case may be.
It's not gonna help anything. Um, but.
Has not been there. Conservation does not know this is happening. And that is without, I mean, that's just fact.
So what I, what I don't know, wha- what I'm aware of is this, um, and I, let me just see who's on here, but, um, so and, and John can jump in here too, but my understanding is that to do, um, the cutting of, uh, on a property of, of whether it's the size or, or what, what designated, I don't know. But they have to go to the state and obtain, um, permission from the state and have a, uh, I don't know, is this, is it a license or a, or a?
They have that. Michael, we have a, we have a copy in hand.
No, I understand, but my understanding of that process is that conservation is consulted and my understanding was that they were aware of this. Um, you know, at least as of today, but I, you know, or, or yesterday, but I mean, they, they were aware of it. Whether they've gone to the site or not, I'm not sure that's required of them or not, but um, I believe they were consulted and aware of it. If I'm wrong, I, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know if that's necessarily something you put on the applicant, right? I mean, I'm not sure that the applicant hasn't done exactly what the applicant is supposed to do in getting his forest cutting, um, permit from the state, so I, I think there's a lot of, 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 um, sort of assumptions and guessing, um, without really knowing exactly what's going on and I'd, I'd much rather know the correct answers, um, uh, and, and go from there. Uh, I just, I don't, I don't, I to me to sort of say that they're, they're doing something wrong and conservation, it needs to jump in. One, I can't tell conservation to jump in, so it's not necessarily my issue, but I, I'm not sure that they don't know, so we can figure that out. Um, and we can consult with them and make sure that everything is, is being done the correct way. You know, I, I don't have a reason to say it's not at this point in time.
Can I comment real quick?
Sure.
So, um, around July twenty-seventh, uh, Sabrina Poehler from the conservation commission, uh, walked the site with me. And there was a number of questions. We had gone back and forth, uh, Dave McWilliams. So they, they've been aware of the cutting plan for at least sixty days. And that was prior to us obtaining approval on the plan.
Yeah, okay, and that's, I appreciate that and that's, um, you know, at least consistent with what I have understood to be the case. Whether, um, it gets appreciated by every board member or whether there are, at a middle of the conservation coordinator and perhaps, um, you know, others who are more intimately involved in it than, than others, I don't know, but, um, at least I was under the impression that the conservation coordinator was quite aware of it. Um. All right. Anything else, Marcus? Any other comments?
There's, uh, someone with a hand raised online here.
Do you have another comment or is that, um?
Oh. Maybe leftover.
I knew that. There, how's that? Uh, no, Mike, I actually just had another question. Kevin Meter, Ten Derry Lane.
Yeah.
Um, just, just thinking about the, um, the comments about building the facilities for the, the animals. Um, having spent time around farms in my life, I know that they can let, they can give off a lot of waste, chicken coops especially give off a lot of toxic waste and odors. And the cows obviously will do the same thing. And I wonder if what's gonna be done to mitigate that because that could go to the groundwater, could, and, you know, the smells to the neighbors, that type of thing. And also, as an animal, uh, an animal lover, I'm concerned about there's unattended livestock on the property right now. I mean, apparently the property has cows on it. There's nobody watching the property except for the cameras. And that's kind of concerning in the neighborhood as well as, like I said, concerned about the possibility of waste and other runoff getting into the groundwater and just, you know, associated smells with farming, quite honestly.
Uh, any, um, other public comments?
There's two. There's two here in the audience. One is a repeat commentator comment. The other one is a new person.
Why don't we go with the new first?
New first. Could you speak up? It's gonna be hard for folks to hear.
Brian Waduke, Five Stage Coach Road, probably the newest member of the neighborhood. Um, with the applicant already stating that he plans on putting accessory buildings up for the animals. And we're going with a one acre estate lot. It seems to me that once we put the accessory buildings up, we're tripping the stormwater management plan on the one acre. So why aren't we incorporating that into our plan now? If we're gonna have animals, we're gonna have accessory buildings, but we're not showing them. And we're only showing a one acre house lot. But we're going to be putting up buildings. That's something that should be taken into consideration now, I would think.
Correct. Good.
And also with that being said, if we're clear cutting under the logging plan that we currently have, um, you know, we're gonna have to stump, I would assume the applicant is going to have to stump and make some sort of means to get to that area to create access either through the stumps, through the debris, whatever the case may be, which again, would also trip the one acre storm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the other comment, Marcus?
The gentleman, uh, who had spoken before, Mr. Billios, Billios.
Right, Billios. Twenty-three Meadow Lane. Um, I just wanted to maybe correct this apprehension that the board may have on what area is being cleared. Uh, Oleg has talked about, uh, uh, clearing this area. When I say clearing, I'm not trying to argue with his cut, clear cutting or if he's clearing according to the plan. clear cutting or if he's clearing according to the plan. I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just use that word, okay? And, uh, but actually the area that's been logged is right here. Okay, and this is extensively logged, which is why you people need to go there. And I can understand, um, the fellow who, I'm, I'm not sure what his name is, that, um,
Michael.
Michael, that's on, okay, and Michael, in the reason he's confused and he doesn't know what's, what's really happening is he hasn't been here. You think, and you all need to go there and see.
Are you referring, am I the one being referred to as Michael, just so I know?
You are.
Okay, well.
Mr. Doherty, the chairman of the board who's not here, he's online to see.
The chairman of the board has COVID, so he's not running out to go, um, look at the property at the moment, but I will happily do so when I am out of my confines.
Never will you quit that.
Yeah.
Okay, and I, I
The hearing opened tonight, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so take a look at the property. Do I thank you?
We just opened the hearing this evening and we can continue it if the board feels it's necessary and, you know, whatever the chairman would want to do, so we just started, we've started the process.
I, I, go ahead.
I'd like to get a answer from Oleg on this. Is there going to be a rooster?
I don't think they're allowed.
No roosters, they're not allowed in our forty zoning, so don't worry about a rooster.
Okay, are there going to be any uncracked castrated male goats?
On what?
A male goat that hasn't been castrated, in other words, a billy goat. Uh, you know, instead of a
Uh, I didn't realize these are questions that I have to answer in regards to whether the animals are castrated or not. I mean, it, it, it does, it seems more of a personal question to me.
Maybe for the goat, but
Apparently a personal question to the goat, but
Not, but it's a public question because billy goats are weak. They have a really, I mean, nanny goats love it, but the billy, most people and most animals, they don't, they really smell and they smell bad and it permeates. Okay, so I wanted to know if there were going to be any uncastrated goats, any billy goats.
That, that decision hasn't been made yet, and this is a thirty-five acre parcel, so this is pretty much the whole size of Meadow Lane. So regardless, even if there was a goat that was intact, you wouldn't smell it, you wouldn't hear it, you wouldn't even know it. Because that side of the property has no residential buildings right behind it, there's another fifty or sixty acres before you get to anything that touches stare it. And you won't, you won't see it, you won't know it, you won't smell it. So in regards to odors and things like that that have been brought up, nobody will even know the animals are there. These animals are for my children, they enjoy taking care of them, they enjoy learning from them, so.
Your opinion, and I appreciate the fact that that is probably your intention, but I would like more than that. Because, you know, if the smell is there, the smell is there. And, I mean, I know this, I've been around goat.
Any other public comments before we continue this to, to the next hearing day or next meeting day?
There's one more for a repeat comment.
Right, I'd like to just get it all out today and then we
It's not like an offensive thing at all. My name's Madeline, I live on nineteen Meadow Lane. It's more of, I've lived there since I was four years old and I'm twenty years, or I'm twenty now, and as Kurt was saying before, Mr. Toomey, it's just, we're just trying to protect our neighborhood, that's simply all it is. Nobody's trying to recuse anything or guess anything, but it's just from the past couple of weeks of the clearing and all that other stuff, there's, we're just concerned of the neighborhood, we've been here for years. I mean, I grew up on this street and I've seen these woods my entire life, but seeing them go, obviously a little bit sad. And we're obviously willing to welcome new neighbors and new families and all that other stuff, it's just, we're just concerned of like the general environment, would be the fair word to say, that's all I wanted to say, but, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, can I, can I make one more quick comment, please?
One, wait a second. Applicant, Michael, which do you want?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, what were the options here? Is there another comment?
Either the applicant or we have another person from the audience who wants to speak.
Uh, why don't I just take the person from the audience and Oleg, I'll certainly give you the opportunity to speak at the end.
Hi, I'm Charlie Bantetakis, twenty-one Meadow Lane. Uh, just very quickly, he should have been given a covenants for this property. Uh, the real estate agent has the responsibility to give out these things upon sale of a property that's a buddy.
But these aren't, these aren't, these aren't things you give out, I mean, they run with the land. They, they, if they, they either run with the land or they don't run with the land and, and
I think he, he was meaning that Mr. Coolig would get a copy of the comment, or of the covenants.
There are no covenants, that's, that's the issue. The property wasn't on the original plan, the attorney did the proper title search to see if there was anything. There was nothing that was attached with the sale of the property. I am the broker on the property, this was a private sale. I am a licensed broker in the state of Mass in Connecticut. I'm aware of what the requirements are with covenants. And this lot did not fall under any guidelines, any covenants. It strictly is under our forty zoning and those are what governs what can and can't be done on this lot.
Until it was like twenty-one Meadow Lane or the stage culture, right, other property.
Okay, that was the last comment from people here in the audience.
Oleg, was there something else you wanted to add or are we?
The, the plan is to build a three thousand square foot colonial with an attached garage in line with the rest of the homes on the street. We're not, and you know, we're not building a thousand square foot ranch that will bring everybody's value down. This house will be in line with the values on the street, and if anything, it'll bring everybody's values up, so if everybody's concerned about their values, this will not happen. I've been a real estate broker for almost twenty years, I'm well aware of values and I, I like to put value in my own home. And this home will be immaculate, you will not even be able to tell that there will be animals there because you won't see them, you won't hear them, you won't smell them. The house will be beautiful, it'll be equal or better to anything on that street.
All right, so why don't we continue this on, uh, let's see. Why don't we put it on for seven thirty on the fourth? Um, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear, I'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave, aye.
All right, and I'll just, I mean, obviously these plans are available for anybody to look at at the Planning Board Office. Um, I believe you said we do have a copy of the Timber Plan, is that right?
It was from the audience, so, uh, we should make a copy of it.
You can make a copy of it, it's allowed to be available if people want to take a look and look at that as well, I would highly recommend, um, because it seems like you know, people are I, I, I think on both sides, making assumptions and, and, and I think trying to talk to folks and figure out the facts and understand there may be a pretty reasonable solution here that everybody can kind of live in harmony, but, um, you know, I would, I would certainly highly recommend everybody start talking a little bit too, um, and trying to find out what the actual plans are, um, going forward from everybody. Um, all right. So that'll be for seven thirty on October fourth. Uh, we have A and Rs, John, oh no, I'm sorry, we, uh, well, might as well skip this one, but one fifty-nine Berkshire Ave, seven
Seven forty-five.
Stormwater Management Permit, continued public hearing. Uh, what do we got with this?
So I did, uh, correspond with uh, engineer Hale and he has requested a dispute for the fourth. Uh, we're still inside the window he projected from, uh, I think it was the August meeting that Randy and I had with him, so we're just grabbing one meeting at a time to stay on top of that.
Excuse me, if you're going to talk, will you talk outside so we can have a meeting?
Get that mic?
I did, yep.
I hear about that. One is a technology.
All right, so we are, uh, continuing it on for the next meeting.
Excuse me, folks, we still have a meeting going on here, could you please take it in the hallway or outside? Thank you.
Um, why don't we continue it on till eight o'clock at the next meeting?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah.
Why are you emotion?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave, aye.
All right, A and Rs, is that what we have on here, John?
Yes.
David. Hey, Mike, I had told him the land was away about six days.
Yeah, I'm, I'm getting there, but it's still holding me down a little bit.
Well, we're back from Ireland, we brought it back with us.
Cup it. Cup it up.
I just can't, I, what I've determined is that I would suck in prison. I can't, I can't sit in a room for twenty-four hours a day, it just, I can't
Somebody come, somebody come back so little time.
Oh, man.
You want me to get back to you?
All right, um.
Michael, open the screen.
Yeah, if you could, please.
Just one second.
No sharing it.
Thank you, thank you, I don't think.
Almost, I'm like, oh, gosh.
So Mike, I went to Ireland, my wife and I both came back with COVID.
I have a special right there.
It's part of the trip plan, I think.
Yeah.
So that came from the audience, so I don't know who out there gave it to us.
I gave her that.
Oh, thank you.
I got you one through, Mike.
How do you know Tom Anderson?
He's a forester.
Yeah.
I'm a forester.
You stick together. Hey, not the best map on the planet for weather, actually.
Okay.
Okay, Mike, uh, and board members, so we're looking at one Wally Way, eighteen Hudson Drive. This is the next step following the, the variances that the applicant sought and the special permit, site plan approval and other approvals granted by the board for the construction of the warehouse and office facility at the property, in this case, shown to the south of the existing building. They'll note they've identified the easement area, they'll fall on one Wally Way parcel. Um, and this is consistent with the previous site plans submitted to the board.
And just run through the requirements here, John, and, and how they meet it, if you could.
One second here. Two hundred feet of frontage.
Yeah, so you could, um, which one's given?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, two A is given to four A, is that right? Or am I flipping that?
No, uh, four A is
Four A is given to two A.
Four thousand per feet is what they need, uh, for conforming a lot and two hundred linear feet of frontage.
All right, uh, any questions from the board?
So they're just removing the property line on four A.
They're giving the property to they're giving the property to, to A but then granting the easement, is that right?
That's correct. So the subtly extent of four A shifts northward towards the existing building.
Right. But that property is going to have easement to be used by the, the former property owner.
That's correct.
So lot two A, the acreage is for this total, for this total area here, okay? I did.
All right, any other questions? Um, okay, uh, I'm always going to turn to Marcus, what's the language, Marcus?
Marcus Phelps will make a motion to endorse the approval of that required plan.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Singer, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave, aye.
Okay. Next, one forty-two College Highway. You have that plan available, John?
Okay, we just a moment, dude. Nice catch, Megan. Yeah, please.
One fifty-nine Berkshire Ave. Oh, okay, all right.
So you have to stay on that. I'm, I'm sorry about that. Yes, me too. Uh, oh, let's see, one second, Mike.
It's going to take this piece, tie this piece up. That's it. Why is it complicated? They said the base would be hundreds of dollars, Chris. Sounds good. Pretty cut and dry. Yeah, call her, he's a Christmas, he's a Christmas tree farm.
Hey, Mike.
Yes.
I apologize, I love to share this with you online, this one, uh, this one was hand delivered by the homeowner. So I tried to throw up a PDF to throw up on the screen. We are looking at
Right here, this is a Christmas tree, this is big, why? Yeah, this is a Christmas tree farm.
Like, we're looking at residents that have bought, land of Coward Farms.
The Coward Farm, building those things. So they're going to expand.
And so the A and R depicts, um, a partial claim that's to be transferred to the farm property.
You know, John, hold on one second, let me just, um, what's the address again?
Forty-two College Highway.
I'm sure you do. Yeah. It's, it's where they put the greenhouses up there, or whatever.
Yeah.
Put those up there, sure.
Just south of there, south of there. So lots have the required area and frontage, the remaining after the combo, combination.
There's merging them.
Yep.
Uh, all right, hold on, one forty-two.
We're talking about GIS map, my criminal.
That's what I'm trying to do.
It was a time criminal. Misunderstand, misunderstood, misunderstood.
About where is it, John?
Uh, we are just south of Coward Farms. There are some acreage There are some acreage, uh, just off the thing, it's a paved greenhouse area or, or display area.
Mike, where the Christmas trees are, that big Y.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Trees aren't lit yet.
Okay.
There's that existing houses, this piece.
So it's shown on the plan, Mike.
They're gonna come in.
Is on opposite of this driveway, since we just roughly speaking acreage.
Perfect, there you go. Yep, thank you.
Got it.
Very good, very, very good.
All right, um, everything meets the requirements, everybody's good with it?
Yes.
All right, do I hear a motion? Or do I hear, uh, yeah, a motion from Marcus?
Marcus Phelps, I make a motion to endorse the approval not required plan for
one forty-two.
One forty-two College Highway.
Do I hear a second?
George Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye?
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Singer, aye.
We've been aye.
Okay. Um, all right, one thirteen Mort Vining Road.
We have something coming forward.
Devin Arnold, eight Nicholson Hill Road. Um, I've got a, a state lot that's already been approved. Um, I have drawings and everything of the driveway and where the house is gonna go. Uh, the only one change I'd like to make is where the entrance of the driveway will be.
Let me see, just.
Currently, right now, uh, this is my piece, goes this way.
You sent, took a mic up, brought up the screen.
Mort Vining Road is here. Um, there is a white house right here with no vegetation in between the house and where my proposed driveway wants to be. What I was thinking about doing is just moving it about sixty feet to the southern side where there is vegetation. There is a house on this side, but their driveway is on this side of their house with a shed or garage. Um, so there really wasn't the any anything wrong with putting the driveway there, it just wants to move to that side. Yeah, there's a hundred and nine feet of frontage, plenty are in the state fifteen feet or more away from the property line and.
And is the road angling at all or dipping at that point? Site lines turning in and out?
No, uh, site line, it really won't change much, it's a gradual downhill, so the amount of room that's gonna move.
You're moving it wide?
Yes, uh, to get it away from my father's house, to move it to the southern side of my property line.
Which Arnold, are you related to?
John.
You're also a good looking son.
Thanks.
Um, are there any changes? Any changes to the size, um, of the driveway? Or sort of shape of the driveway from before that it should be reviewed by fire or police for access issues?
There's a turnaround spot here that we have incorporated.
Right, but I'm not going that far back. I kinda penciled it in here, so here's the proposed driveway. Before it even gets to, so instead of having it up here, I think to move it to here.
Which is a new driveway here, right?
Wind it into here.
Okay, just, okay.
Well, before we get to the culvert.
Yeah. You know, John, really not.
We got some cool stuff to look here, Mike, you can't see it right now.
John, if you could do me a favor and just sort of with the cursor, show me where that new part is going.
So essentially, Mike, if you can see my curve right now, at that, uh, dividing line, that's where we're, where he's proposing to have it swing further down towards the southern lot line and then meet on this portion of the project.
All right.
Devin, just to reiterate, you mentioned vegetation.
Yep, there is a tree line, uh, there is a tree line between me and the yeah, southern, uh, neighbor, uh, which that vegetation will stay, uh, will not be removed, so there will be a nice buffer line between me and the southern neighbor. Where on the northern side of that lot, there is no vegetation and my driveway will be right next to.
Mike, if I can speak for just a second here, uh, Devin, if, uh, the board chooses to move, uh, ahead with your proposal.
Yep.
Uh, this sketch right here ends up being adopted as the minor, they frankly will uh, sign.
Yep.
Um, the sketch right here, we do show some clearing, I know this is diagrammatic.
Yeah.
Um, is that the intention to remove some of those trees in that location?
I would say, I would say about two of those trees are completely dead. But the other trees will remain, yes. I'm not gonna touch any of those trees, those will stay, uh, just putting that, you know.
Okay.
Drying in there, yeah.
Just to bring you up to speed, what we're looking at here, there's a, this wedge of trees at that location, looks like some of those will be, uh, removed with the, the grading and relocation drive.
There's gotta be some trees being removed, right? I mean, there's, I can't.
It's pretty much an open yard and field, uh, where I'm putting this driveway. Um, if there's any trees that are gonna be cut, are probably gonna be right next to Mort Vining Road to create an entrance portion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think there's a stand of trees right there, isn't there on that diet, on that plan?
Yeah, but there is a gap in between the trees where there's probably enough room to fit a driveway, you may have to cut maybe one or two twelve inch, ten inch trees, that's it.
Just past you, dude.
Yeah. It's like right across the street from Fahrenheit.
Okay. Can you go slide over, can we see Aaron?
This is about twelve inch.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Historical tree?
There's no Sutton Hall there.
Where's my house? That's not my house.
No.
So there'll remain trees.
Correct.
No chicken homes.
And if there is one or two trees taken out to put the driveway in that new position, what's beyond that is more trees prior to your neighbor's shed or something like that, right?
Correct, yeah, there's a shed there and then the two car garage and then the house.
Some driveway sounds.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
All right, um. John, what do you think? What is your thought process on this? I mean, I'm not sure I see this as a major change.
Well, yeah, I do, I think there's, we've got in the well, I say atypical, it seems that the state lots are, well, they're all different, special, right? Uh, so, but we do have an abundance of frontage here where there is a roofier ship, uh, he does need to keep it fifteen feet away from the southerly, um, lot line. Um, and we can have that annotated on the sketch that has been provided, otherwise, I think it's minor, I just think that for state law purposes, one of the key considerations the board has to look at is, you know, access. Um, so just making sure that was acknowledged here, uh, making sure that, uh, Devin and Jimmy didn't have any hiccups moving forward, otherwise, it's my opinion, this is a minor, a plan change.
Yeah, I mean, I think I haven't looked at all those.
Doing it on your own.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I think there has to be a updated, I think, I, well, I would suspect by the special permit that there's a final site plan to be submitted. Um, that shows all the terms and conditions and everything else, and so I, I think we have to have something on file that shows the new driveway location. Um, so I mean, I think that's the only thing that I would, I think you have to require, I think there has to be a, a, a redone site plan that shows that new location. But other than that, I don't think it has to go through any kind of uh, modification of the actual permit.
Now, this, definitely, this hasn't been recorded or anything yet. It's, it's past the, whatever.
I've already had.
No, this was back in Ja- uh, January, is that when you came, um?
Early.
Yeah, yeah, earlier this year.
But filed with the registry of deeds, recorded.
The special permit, I'm sure.
We definitely need another plan to.
That's what I'm saying, I think we have to have the final revised final plan, I don't know if one's been submitted, I suspect that language is in whatever permit we gave. Um, so I think if, if us, if a new plan that shows the modification is submitted and the board can um, just confirm that that's what is being represented, then I think we're fine with it. That would be my position, but I'm certainly willing to hear other suggestions.
Cause the one he has tonight, there's no signatures or approval on it. On the document. No, that's the.
Yeah, no, I mean, the plan, uh, I mean, I, this is my memory, but I we, we've already done this, this was, I think, in January, but I could be wrong, maybe it's February.
Yes, January.
And, uh, we already signed everything, we did everything, um. You know, I don't get too fired up about the slight movement on a house placement location or even a driveway, as long as, you know, the board's kinda looking at it, made sure it's not a real material change. Um, you know, all I care about is just having on file an actual site plan that shows it. So, um, you know, which would then, I believe those get recorded, do those get recorded or just the permit?
I think just the permit, Mike.
Yeah, that's what I, I think the site plan is on file with the, with the board and the site, and the permit is not gonna change. The same conditions in the permit are, are gonna be applicable. Um.
Mike, can he get away just drawing this in himself, or does it go back and have everybody spend all this sort of money just to move the driveway fifty feet?
I mean, I can't imagine it's too much money just to do that if they have it already.
They already have it on their machine, on their CAD. Oh, yeah, it does, I, I can see the name on the print. It's gonna, he's gonna soak them. You're gonna come back and have to move the house closer to the street, you can't pull the driveway.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like I said, I just think um, I, I, I have no problem minimizing the process on our end, but I just, we do have to have, and I, I would say a professionally drawn final plan, um. I, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure how you could really there's a lot on there, I'm not sure how you could just kinda move it, um.
Oh, there's all kinds of ways to just move it.
So I don't, I don't know, board, you know, tell me what you think, I mean, I don't, but that's where I, that's where my head's at.
Not me, I wouldn't care, I go by it every day.
Any suggestions, any different suggestions as to what we can do here?
I guess some suggestions, but they're probably not gonna be nice.
Just withdraw this whole idea.
Yeah.
We need a revised site plan.
I just, I, you know, and I, I appreciate that it's not a huge change, but I just think you know, um, there's not, we, we do need to have something on file that's, that's, that's showing exactly what's gonna be built there and how it's gonna be built, and so but we just need it, I mean, I, like I said, I can't, I don't know, maybe, maybe maybe Rob's gonna charge you an arm and a leg, but I can't imagine it's gonna be that much just to move this over the way you're suggesting, so. I don't know.
Tape the seam together, fold it up, put it in the envelope.
A little white out.
Mike, you got a picture here, a little, little tape on the end, turn it to one piece, fold it in half, tuck it in the folder, we're all good.
Yeah, you're, you know, you're not a private contractor anymore, Dave, this is now, this is now government, you gotta.
No, he works for the town, I remember that.
Yeah, um, you know, I just, that's, that's my. I will, you know, if there's, obviously if a majority of the board disagrees with me, that's fine, but that's and I think we can kinda keep this on as a discussion and just when it gets submitted set up on it and, and.
Mike, I would suggest that in, um, perhaps trying to encourage other, um, lot owners who may be looking to slightly modify their site plans, that we don't, um, discourage them from coming forward and seeking our approval ahead of time by making the process onerous on the applicant. Um, if we get a perhaps more slightly detailed or enlarged drawing from the applicant that may be on par to other site plans that we've put our stamp on and approved that weren't produced by a professional land surveyor. We could potentially make this exception considering that the estate plan special permit is already on file. And this site plan change is not dramatically changing that approval.
Um.
Thank you, Mr. Senter.
Listen, I, so I would say this, which is give it a shot, right? I don't, I, I'm more than willing to look at it, um, and you can, you can work with um, you know, you can ask John Goddard about, about what needs to be shown on there, but obviously we need to see setbacks, we need to see what's happening at the road, you know, I mean, you could see that on the old plan, so, I mean, we need to see that um, to, to sort of be able to ensure that it complies with um, the bylaws and that it is actually just a minor location change and not anything more. So if that can be shown in some way, um, by you doing it yourself, you know, then, then bless your heart there, you can get it, we will accept it and that's fine, I don't, I'm not trying to put more on you. I just think that there's, my, looking at that plan, there's a lot there. Um, a lot of that is required that we need to see to sort of make sure in an estate plan, estate lot, which has a pretty narrow opening where you're putting your driveway, we need to see exactly that it's meeting all the requirements there, so as long as that's being shown, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
All right. So it's up to you whether you wanna, you know, what the value of your time is, if you wanna do it, then great, if you wanna reach out and have it done by Quebec, then do that, but um, I'd say we'll keep it on as a discussion item and you can come back to us when it's done, uh, however you choose and we'll evaluate it.
Okay, do I have to wait for a meeting or should I just go see John or?
Um, once it's done, just talk, touch base with John and, um, um, make sure that it, you know, comes up, um, he'll just present it or you can present it in the discussion section like we did today.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it, John, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senter.
Touching bases.
I, I do wanna make it clear for the record that, uh, Sutton jinxed us by saying this mo- this meeting was gonna be done by eight thirty, I just.
You're at home, so you, you don't have to worry about travel time now. No planning board meeting is ever done by eight thirty. You wanna bet?
I'm blaming Sutton.
Mike, what time is lights out where you are?
Back in the day, days before.
All right, uh, let's get to this decision so we can get through.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, I know.
The decision for the.
John, just, yeah, I'll pull it up, um. I have it, I've been working on it. I did see your, yeah, I do have the uh, I just gotta find it, but yes, I do have that.
That doesn't show with my version, huh?
That's scary. When it comes out of um Microsoft. My OneDrive. I I kid you not.
How's your daughter doing in school? Get the first bill or second bill?
So which one?
All right, can everybody see this?
Blow it up!
Really?
Get bigger.
Well, hold on.
Please.
Only, it's only a hundred and fifty percent, hold on.
Two hundred's good.
How's that?
Perfect.
Fantastic. All right. Um, I made a little. Changes as I went along here, you could see them in red, they're just usually just the spacing and whatever else, but um. John's complete hatred of commas, I've tried to adjust a little bit. But um, you know, the ones, uh, this is a stormwater management permit as well, right, John, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just added that in the application, it was down here. Um, I think we do have all the. Proper chapter sites in here. Um, anything in the procedural history? At least as far as you can see that you wanna change. Okay. Hearing none. Go to, well, last sentence here. Which I think is pretty good, and then we will. Move on to section one, general fi- is that section one or, yeah, it is section. I guess, all right, yeah, section one, general findings, anything in the general findings that needs to be changed? Or added to? Hearing nothing, I'm gonna turn to the definitive plan findings, which is section two, anything in section two, which anybody has any comments? Or suggested changes on?
It's an application to modify the definitive plan?
To uh. Actually. Application. For a definitive plan, right? All right. Uh, anything else that needs to be changed in section two? Okay. Section three. At least anything, anything in this lead up to the waivers that needs to be changed? Okay. Page three, waiver number one. Lacking on my law, anybody see any changes to that? Okay, waiver number two. One inch equals forty feet, anybody have any issue with that?
Rather than one hundred.
It's fifty? So they changed it by ten feet?
It's what fits beautifully on a plan.
All right then. Is that appear to be accurate, the fifty versus a hundred, you think?
It's accurate.
It's the size of, it's a small subdivision, right, so that's the the.
That's that's the difference, in this case, we can zoom in, because limited acreage.
Yeah, okay, all right. Makes sense, um. All right, motion. Uh, for waiver number three, anybody see any issues in this section? Okay, we will go down to number four, anybody have any issues? On this waiver? Okay, page five, final waiver, number five. Any issues with this?
What was the final decision with retention on? Who's gonna be responsible for that? The HOA or? Somebody separate or what?
I don't remember, it's, it's gotta be in here. Uh.
That part, this is set up for the HOA.
For HOA, okay. Referring. The c- the covenants, right, before they issue building permit, they they still have to have these covenant and restrictions. Submitted for our approval.
Uh, yes, before before building permit, it's just, it's the timing, that's all they're changing is the timing of it.
Yes.
Yeah, yep. All right. Section four, conditions for definitive plan. A and B, anybody have any issues with what is on the remainder of page five here?
So we're saying the security has to be a bond, not a covenant in lieu of bond?
Yes.
I think we just start with a bomb, we can always switch over later.
Yeah, and I, you know, we've been having. This is something that I think we should be talking about going forward as to whether. What the better way to do this is, um, and whether just to require a bond, I, you know. Um, and talking to some folks on the development side, they don't seem to have an issue with doing that, and I'm not sure that the covenant gets us. Anything more than a. Bond would get us, so. Um, so. But anyway, we, you know, we should probably talk about that going forward, but this is what this is set up as. Um, all right, anything else on these? Okay. Page five is done. Sutton, we are one third of the way through, I just wanna keep you updated.
Thank you, Mike, I appreciate that, buddy.
No problem. All right. C, D, and E, one through three, anybody have any? Comments or changes on these paragraphs?
The language in C gonna get us in perpetuity here? All open spaces shown on a dependent plan shall be conveyed to the homeowners association, along with a conservation deed restriction. Is that gonna? In perpetuity, run forever? We don't wanna lose it, right? What do, what do we put in in the past to? To ensure that? You're using, you're using what we usually use, John? From our word processor? I mean, if it worked for the Greens West and the Greens East. I guess it would work for this.
Well, no, I mean, let me just, um.
Or maybe this is just the part where it's conveyed to the homeowners association.
I don't mind, let's put the, let's put the terminology in it, just so that there's no question when it's drafted off that. That that's, oh, well, I spelled correctly. All right. But I think they do, I. Yeah, I just decided to go back and look this. These conservation and agricultural restrictions stuff in the. That kind of gives me a headache, um, I gotta go back and look at that though. Um.
Protection is uh intended to run a perpetuity, but I think the language is good to have there.
Yeah, I just, case, I thought they were, I thought they were, I thought you really had to. Show some reason why they wouldn't, um, if you were gonna do it with. Less than perpetuity, but. Again, I don't, the, you know, being extra is not a big deal, um. Any issues with D? Any issues with E? Okay, pretty standard language. F, again, pretty standard. G, pretty standard. H is pretty standard. Anything on G or H here? Okay. I. Through N. Um. We've, John, is this a final number here?
The number suggested by uh Mr. Brown.
Okay.
It is a change from what has been done previously.
All right, so we can come to that, but, um. All right. Anybody have any suggested changes on I through N, and what do they think about the cost of the? Money to be deposited in sidewalk revolving accounts?
How big of a changes?
For context, the Greens uh East subdivision headed at fifteen dollars per linear foot. Which Mr. Brown indicated was adversely inadequate for construction.
So while it may seem like a large dump, we weren't, we didn't have a good base number to start off.
I think he's being, I mean, he was like conservative about the.
So both east and west on the greens was fifteen dollars and then your.
At least east.
Oh, east. That's the one they're working on now.
All right, everybody good with I through N, we go with that number? Okay. We'll go down to, oh, I don't know why that's on there. Deal with that later. O through, O and P, or no, O through Q, I guess. Anybody have any suggested or suggestions or changes on these?
So Mike, you're, oh, no, does everybody have? Uh, nope, okay, nevermind, we're consistent. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I don't know why that's like that, I don't, maybe I screwed something up, but um. I don't know why that's like that, I don't think I deleted anything.
Uh, I think it, it, that's a, uh, a carryover from. Revised formatting on my end.
Okay. All right, um. I mean, I, the only thing I guess to talk about, and this is more of a bigger conversation than this, but. Um, I mean, are are we actually gonna have someone who can go out there and look at this thing as a third party inspector? What are the odds that we're gonna get someone to do that?
Say that again, what? We should.
I understand, but anybody wanna tell me the names of the third party inspectors on the um current uh developments? And if you say John Goddard, that is no longer accurate.
I have to. John had to resign.
So, I, you know, I just, it's, it's not the easiest thing in the world to get someone to be a third party inspector, so I'm just curious. I'm not sure what the alternative is, but, cause you need someone with eyes on it, but. I I, you know.
Gotta be one of us? So are you saying, or we gotta find somebody?
Yeah, I mean, it just.
As I said, the suggested language was to have the developer.
Yeah, uh, the applicants.
Provide.
Yeah.
If you have your proofs, qualifications.
And I, you know, I just want this to be, I think this is gonna be step one in. Trying to be a little bit more proactive on these developments and making sure they're running smoothly, so, um. You know, if anybody knows anybody or wants to reach out and try to figure out people who we can. Trust and use for these types of positions, I think that would be a useful exercise.
Well, one time we had a list of engineering firms that. We would give to the applicants to get, to get someone from.
Yeah, then we heard him.
They're the stand, you know, the standard, uh.
You know, I just don't, I'm not sure people are running out to do this type of work, but I don't know. I don't know how much it pays.
Well, at least fifteen bucks an hour.
You can do it.
Um, well, just to keep in mind, again, I just think this is a bigger discussion, but I just wanted to at least raise it here.
Well, anybody on the board could do it, right, because uh. We're special designated employees, so. We could, we could, uh. You're welcome, you're welcome.
I am wholly unqualified for that, so, I mean, that takes me out of it, but. Um, so, all right, let's go to P here, anything about? This specific issue related to this project?
I think you need to remove Russ Anderson's name, just put down.
No, that's just the letter, that's the, that's designating or defining.
Yeah, he's still here, there was reference to a letter from him.
Yeah.
You die with taking your name off everything. Little shopping mart, nothing, no schools.
I knew that her.
I wanna know what shopping mart your name is on, Sutton.
Not mine, they don't want me on there, scare people away. It, are we putting in more than one? I have a town named after me, Mike. Are we putting in more than one sister? Says proposed sisterns. We have a dry hydrant? One or more?
How about smittle? Tag it up, propose.
But we just had one. Okay, where are we now? Oh, keep going, revised one? Okay. Yep, it's plural, we got two.
All right. Q. Through. R, R, T, I think we can see through. Anybody? Pretty straightforward? We'll go U through X.
What was going on with V? We were concerned about blocks three and five?
There's just easements that run on those lots. I think this is pretty standard, but I could be wrong. John, do.
So the discussion about lots three and five stemmed from. Concerns following the debacle at the Greens West. With the open space access.
Wow.
So that, that's why we're saying it's to be. Visibly staked or otherwise demarcated in the field.
This wasn't in.
Space easement.
I thought this was in one of the greens once, no? Or am I thinking of something different?
Oh, gosh, let me double.
No, we just start calling the green.
Maybe I'm wrong. No, I'm not worried about it. I just thought it was in one of them, but. I mean, it, it makes sense to do.
Okay, so the buyer can see what's going on on the lot that they're purchasing. There are some.
Because they didn't look.
Activities and easements.
I'm gonna call it the green rule, Mike.
So because the buyer isn't observing.
Actually, this should probably be initial offering for sale, right? I mean, you don't want them to stake something out right the day before they sign the. The deed.
Yeah, that's a good one.
The idea being that these will be staked up. Staked out the entire time they're offered for sale. So people can see it. All right, anything else? Okay. Section five. Any, anybody have any issue with section five, the motion? Okay.
The two in parentheses, the provision of a performance guarantee in accordance with the requirements of. MGL forty-one, section eighty-one U. Is that gonna allow something other than a bond? Shall we say performance bond instead of guarantee?
Let us take a look. What is it? Forty-one? Eighty-one.
Section eighty-one U. Does that only allow for a bond?
It allows bond, money and covenants.
And we want bond, right?
I mean, I don't. Now, I think it's used the word guarantee earlier, but let me check and make sure this is on page nine.
But we use bond.
Provision of a performance guarantee. Show will be in the form of a performance bond and maintenance bond. So I'm just gonna refer to. For A.
Why don't we just put it in there? So it's the same as four A. Then they won't have to look backwards.
Because the performance guarantee we selected is in accordance with the requirements of the chapter. That's all we're saying here is that we're moving that this plan meets those provisions.
Which allows for three forms.
Right. Doesn't have to, have to specify here.
But he's already specifying a bond.
Yeah.
Was it specifying a bond?
We're specifying.
Specifying a bond up front.
But even that language in that, that section was like a performance guarantee. And in this case, we are requesting a block. Here, we're just saying in accordance with the rule, we have a performance guarantee.
How about that, Marcus? I haven't used Latin.
Nice. I'll never fly in this neighborhood.
What do you mean? My daughter's taking Latin right now.
Oh.
An up and coming language.
Yeah.
Is that work?
Yeah, if you want to have people go back to it, I mean, why can't we say in the form of a bond, a performance guarantee? In the form of a bond.
Because. I don't know. I suppose we could. Hold on. So. Yeah, I mean, I just. I, I think unless you want to cut and paste entire section A here, I just think referring back to it, which has. The form. What it needs to cover. I, I, to me, that seems like it's easier just to refer back to it. But you tell me what.
Long, long as. We can monitor that. It's fine. Besides, it's quarter to ten.
That sounds like something that someone would say.
That is dead check where you are, Mike.
My job to keep the clock moving forward.
I, I thought your job was to keep the clock moving.
But to keep the board moving, to cut down on the clock.
All right, section seven. Next is six. These are one through seventeen, so let's do one through eight. Anybody have any issues with one through eight?
We say earlier, it's an R forty.
I was gonna say, that's, yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Is it R forty or R twenty?
Forty. Good catch, Mr. Spina.
Yep. All right.
You got an extra candy bar.
You know, I can't bribe you guys every week.
All right, anything else I want to raise here? Okay. Nine through seventeen. Anybody have anything on nine through seventeen? And we should have nothing. I will move on to the. Findings. Anybody have anything on one through five in the findings here? This is from. One eighty-five, twenty-three, which is the flexible residential section. Okay, we are now two thirds of the way done. Six through eleven. Let me know if there's anything you want to change.
The length of the planning board meeting, but that's seven to eleven. Sorry about that. Wrong topic.
You know, and, and after I just. Held my tongue about what town you're named after, and I was gonna say something. That wasn't not so nice, Dave.
This meeting is being recorded. Alright, that's all rated G. But we lost everybody pretty much online, but it is being recorded.
I gotta watch it. My boss is still online.
All right, anybody six through eleven here? Okay. Twelve through. We will go to fourteen, because fifteen is cut off a little here. Again, these are just the criteria in the F R D bylaw, similar to that one through seventeen, that's special permit bylaw. Keep going down here. So we can see fifteen.
What was third, the end of thirteen, it says here. The open space in the development shall be conveyed to said home, said homeowners association. In a manner provided, isn't that here in?
There you go. Move on to section seven, unless I hear otherwise. Look at one and two here. Which again are pretty. Straightforward. I think this probably needs to be changed to five proposed. Lots. With. One. Building. And accessory structures on each, is that right?
Yeah.
I think you said with one.
With. Yep.
You said it right.
I said it right, just type it right. Got the right letter, first letter right, though. All right. Partial credit.
At least you got the comma right.
That is, I, you know, they go through a bunch of commas in here. I'm not gonna lie. I'm not. John and I are gonna have to have a conversation about the Oxford comma and.
Oh, no.
That's tough one, John.
All right, two through five here. Anybody have anything? It will give John a hard time, but he did do a hell of a job in getting this thing together. This is a long decision.
For August. It was, we refined some.
Here's, uh, who asked this before, Marcus or Dick? I can't remember, about maintaining the detention basin.
That was Richard.
Okay, so here's the language on that three right here. So it's applicant and then homeowners. All right. Two years? Is that what we're given on this?
That's what it says in our local bylaw.
I get that. I, I get confused on that every single time. I don't know why. It's, we, we're allowed three years, but it says two years in what we have, right? Is that what we did?
Yeah.
All right. All right. I don't, I don't know why that cannot stick in my head, but that's fine. Okay, anything on six through ten?
The name of the subdivision.
I just don't know if I've seen it.
Yes.
People look at the magazine.
They're not gonna get sued by those people down in Texas, right, for doing this, using the name? All right, anything on six through ten? Okay. Section eight is just the motion. Section nine. Stormwater management findings. Anybody on one through four here?
Something's all packed, ready to go.
That's what I figured.
Ready to sign their plans, so there you go.
Just cleaning my mess up.
Section ten, anything?
Consistency, should we say fire cisterns and dry, what's it, dry hydrant?
Yeah, dry hydrant. It is plural.
It's cisterns, right?
Yeah.
Well, well, hold on. John, is that?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Cisterns and dry hydrant should go in here?
I guess the question is, if I. I'm scratching my brain trying to figure out why I typed it in to the conditions of the stormwater management. To the fire cisterns.
That is a fair point that you make as well.
I must have done it.
We're nervous water, that's.
When I shit, weep shot three out of boys.
I'm way behind.
So you could take that out. And fire cisterns.
We don't need conditions. Are any conditions? No, we need this. We need this condition, right? Do we need this?
Stormwater management.
No, we don't need any of these, do we? John.
Well, this is referring to the maintenance of the basin, right? Stormwater management. You're maintaining the catch basins. And the, and the piping that goes into the stormwater basin. But you don't need to maintain the cisterns, that's.
Maintenance of the stormwater management system, period.
Yeah, period, stormwater management system. But the rest of it is fine.
Yes, we're good with that.
Yeah. You gotta have a mowing plan and a clean out plan.
No, I thought it was all addressed before. No, I thought it was all addressed before, but I guess it can be repeated here, right?
I mean, eventually the town will take over the catch basins and the drainage system. They're not taking over the stormwater basin.
Okay. And we have hit the end. Are. There we go. Are we right?
Mike, why can't we do it just one shot?
Am I wiretapping?
That didn't work as I don't.
Just grabbed that two thousand twenty-one under the filing. Tomorrow's another day, you know?
Good catch.
Extra candy. You always go on at a boy back.
No, no, I'll give credit where credit is due.
All right, do I hear a motion to waive the requirement of chapter three fifteen, twelve, A one, that an original drawing of the definitive plan in black ink on my law be submitted with the definitive plan application and allow it to be submitted once review has been completed and the plans are in final form for recording?
Marcus Phelps, so moved. Richard Singer second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael authority, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been, I.
Your motion to waive the requirement under chapter three fifteen, twelve, be that the definitive plan be prepared at a scale of one inch equals forty feet and allow it to be prepared at a scale of one inch equals fifty feet.
Marcus Phelps, I'll move.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Okay, do I hear a motion to waive the requirement under chapter three fifteen, twelve, B eleven, and chapter three fifteen, eighteen, by reference of the definitive plan contain a park suitably located for recreation purposes as the proposed flexible residential development will provide adequate open space with existing walking trails, forested land for passive recreation only uses.
Marcus Phelps, I'll move.
Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been, I.
Okay, do I hear a motion to waive the requirement under chapter three fifteen, two G, that sidewalks be constructed on both sides of the street and allow a sidewalk to be constructed on one side as shown on the definitive plan. Condition has been added to the decision for the developer to deposit an offsetting amount into the town of Southwick sidewalk revolving account.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been, I.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to waive the requirement under chapter one eighty-five, twenty-three, J two, that a homeowners association agreement of covenant be submitted with the special permanent site plan approval application? And the requirement under three fifteen, twelve, C one, that any covenants and restrictions applied to the development be submitted with the definitive plan application and allow such covenants and restrictions to be submitted for approval by the planning board prior to the issuance of a building permits.
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Richard Singer, second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been, I.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that the planning board impose the conditions in section four? Of approval upon any above conditions? Do I hear a motion that the planning board impose the conditions listed in section four of this written decision upon any approval of the definitive plan?
Dave's been, so move.
Section four being titled conditions for definitive plan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been, I.
Do I hear a motion that the planning board approved the applicant's definitive plan based upon all the facts and testimony uh, presented at the public hearing held on the application and based upon the conditions of approval to which the applicant has dissented? endorsement of the conditional approval is conditioned upon revision of the definitive plan to reflect the conditions of approval in the prior or simultaneous recording of the certificate of action with the Hannah County Registered Dees and the provision of a performance guarantee in accordance with the requirements of section four A supra. Do I hear that motion?
Dave's been, so move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
Folks who want to get out of here, you should be fighting to do these motions in seconds. You can't do just one. Do I hear a motion to grant the special permanent site plan approval for this flexible residential development with the conditions as set forth in section seven?
Dave's been, so move.
Take that singer second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Dave's been, I.
Do I hear a motion to grant the storm water management permit for this flexible residential development with the conditions as set forth in section ten above?
Dave's been, so move.
Take that singer second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Richard Singer, I.
David Sutton, I.
Okay. That is all set. Let me save it.
Dave's been, I, in case I missed that last one.
All right, um, so I'll get that to you, John. Um. Anybody get a chance to get those executive session minutes?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve them?
Marcus Phelps moved to approve the June seventh, twenty twenty-two executive session minutes.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Dave's been a second.
Do a roll call vote. Um, I'm standing. I haven't seen him, so I'm not gonna approve him. Go ahead.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Dave's been, I.
All right. Anything else on the routine business we need to talk about before we end this?
Master plan had over nine hundred responses to the questionnaire.
Yeah, it was a good job.
Yeah, excellent. And we're meeting, public meetings on the thirteenth of October and the fifteenth of October.
Okay. Um, Dick, I think you guys are wrapping up. Is that right?
Uh, we had a little bump in the road. We took a vault and it came out even.
They gotta get some more people qualified.
Put an even number on that committee, geez. All right, well.
Anyways, there was two of us that were not qualified to vote because we hadn't gone sworn in. I got sworn in on a trip. The other party did yet or not. So we have another meeting coming up in a week or two.
All right.
We're almost done. We're almost done with it.
All right, good. Um. All right, I think we figured out the schedule. Uh, no one had any issues with that latest one, right, Meg?
I don't believe so.
And then if, and does anybody, uh, need help getting to sleep so we can go over the nifty stuff or are we good with that for tonight?
Hey, Mike, they got bed check where you are?
Next meeting, maybe. Maybe Randy says next meeting.
All right. Hey, I got a cough that keeps me up all night, so feel free to. I'm gonna text you for the next eight.
Hey, Mike, since you're up, would you mind sending that decision tonight?
That's what I'm doing. I'm gonna, I couldn't find the accept changes thing. So once I hit that, I will get it to you.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Oh, here it is. All right. Accept all changes. Um, okay, so, um, Sutton, do I hear your motion?
The motion, close to me.
Second. All those in favor?
I.